All the being called please rise. We can have a moment of silence to keep in our thoughts and prayers that our military, law enforcement, and all of the ones who respond as we return home safe. Thank you. But?
Let's release this reply from the United States of America. Consider your call for instance, one nation under God, individual.
For this, for this, this public meeting, the likes of this public meeting and public in the morning, we should view our left-wing newspaper, you can look it on the Middlesex County website, it's all on the bulletin board in the Middlesex County Administration Building, twenty to forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting, which will be actually due in two weeks.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, here. County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Cockle, here. County Commissioner McCollum, here. County Commissioner Nara, here. County Commissioner Tamara, here. County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Here. Consideration of the twenty twenty-four budget. Number twenty-four five thirty-seven.
Confirming actions of the Board of County Commissioners that previously adopted in calendar year 2024 Resolution twenty-four dash two thirty-six R to increase tax levy cap limits and establish cap bank, um, as NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifteen point four eight forty-five.
At this time, I open up the public portion on Resolution number twenty-four five thirty-six. Oh. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. This is the hearing on the budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to ask if the county is still relying in any way on?
This is, this, this is just the tax cap levy unless there's one resolution, one resolution and a cap there.
Next one, I'll come back.
Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote, motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-four five thirty-seven?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, yes. County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Cockle. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Yes.
The twenty twenty-four budget summary was advertised in the Hope New Tribune on April fifth, twenty twenty-four, post Governor of Middlesex County Government website calling for a public hearing Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
The clerk will read the summary of the approved budget.
Summary of the budget, overall general appropriations for twenty twenty-four, five hundred and ninety-three million, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, less than sixty revenue, one hundred and eleven million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and three dollars, amount to be raised by taxation, county purchase tax, four hundred and eighty million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
At this time, I recognize Commissioner Cockle, Chair of Finance, regarding the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I look forward to the twenty twenty-four Middlesex County budget for possible adoption following tonight's public hearing. This budget follows Middlesex County's tradition of maintaining a low level of cost of operations without the impact of quality of services we provide. This budget is not just a set of numbers. It is a reflection of our acquires, our values, and our commitments to the people we serve here in Middlesex County. The twenty twenty-four budget focuses on building sustainability and is a direct result of careful plan and thoughtful deliberation and a deep understanding of the needs of our communities. Furthermore, it is a balanced budget that prioritizes fiscal responsibility while also investing in the programs and services that are essential to our needs. This year marks the tenth consecutive year in reducing the county's debt service, a value decreased by over three million dollars from prior year. Because of this downward trend, the county is able to reallocate funding, enable us to spend less taxpayer money to complete critical infrastructure projects. Those savings have allowed the county to support various technological upgrades, invest in our education systems, and improve our beautiful county parks and multiple recreation facilities. Equally as important as new investments, this year's budget also addresses unprecedented increases in mandated expenses such as pension, FICA, and social security, and operational expenses such as utilities, rents, and other contractual obligations. The escalated cost of goods and services has severely impacted the prices of business. The twenty twenty-four budget reflects a thorough vetting that all services and contracts relating to operations are maximized for efficiency and provide the greatest return per dollar spent. I thank my fellow commissioners and encourage them to vote to adopt the twenty twenty-four county budget. I would also like to thank county administrator, best administrator in New Jersey, John Colomino, and the county finance department under the direction of CFO Nicholas Stilinski. And if you've ever heard a CFO saying that he was ecstatic when something was approved, that was the quotes that he used, and that's very unusual to have a CFO ever use the word ecstatic, so congratulations. And all of our employees for their hard work to establish this proposed operating budget. Your commitment to excellence and your contributions have been invaluable in shaping this budget and ensuring that it aligns with our strategic goals and objectives. This is very important, thank you.
It's my privilege to introduce the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four. This budget represents our vision for the future and our dedication and commitment to serving the needs of Middlesex County. As Commissioner Cockle mentioned, tonight we will hold a public hearing and a vote to adopt the twenty twenty-four Middlesex County Operating and Capital Improvement Budgets. This budget is a result of months of hard work by the Board of County Commissioners, especially Commissioner Cockle, county administration, and the entire county staff, all of whom are committed to serving our residents and helping us to maintain our disciplined fiscal practices. Middlesex County has attained for the twenty-third year, and I repeat, the twenty-third consecutive year, the coveted triple-A bond rating. This excellent rating enables us to spend less taxpayer money when completing critical infrastructure projects. This is further supported by our twenty twenty-four capital improvement pay-as-you-go program of seventy-seven point six million dollars. These funds bolster our ability to complete vital road, bridge, facility, education, parks, and other infrastructure projects. This not only ensures the safety of our residents but improves their well-being and our efficiency and effectiveness. The rating agencies have recognized the fiscal stoniness and financial acumen we exercise. The agencies have remarked favorably on our continuous ability to build an exemplary surplus level while reducing our overall debt service and funded debt. By reducing the percentage allocated to debt, we grow the ability to budget for other services and reduce taxation, both of which demonstrate our goal of sustainability and maximizing the taxpayers' dollar. I want to commend and thank this commission, the board, our entire county workforce for the dedication to serving our residents and helping us to maintain or decrease our spending and increase our revenue to help us provide quality services at the lowest possible cost. With that, I open up the hearing on the twenty twenty-four budget. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I wanted to ask if this budget relies at all upon administrative fees to be paid by inmates in the county jail?
No.
No, it's no longer a thing?
I don't believe this. I could stand corrected to the warden, administrative fees at the jail, are there any at this point?
Yes, there's still the district fee.
There are fees of the road other than the entry fee?
No fees.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest that if this budget is truly a reflection of our priorities and values, that hitting up people who have not been convicted but are entering the jail against their will is not a good way to fund our county. I imagine it's a drop in the bucket, and the county should stop doing it. Previous years, I've seen it something on the order of a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand that you get from these fees. I imagine with the population of the jail being down in recent years, it's much smaller chunk of the budget. It's not right. As you know, sometimes people are innocent of the crimes they're accused of, and they should not be penalized by having the county steal a hundred dollars from them. So I would encourage you, especially those of you who care about criminal justice and due process, to oppose the budget on these grounds or introduce an amendment to remove that portion of the revenues. I also wanted to ask, well, first of all, do you agree with me on that? Would you be willing to do that for me tonight?
I'm not going to comment on that comment. I appreciate your comments, and we will take them into further consideration.
Thank you. I hope every member of the board will. How much is going to be, how much of the five hundred ninety-two million dollar budget is going to support this CIO plan?
CIO plan is a capital investment which does not, does not reflect any appropriations, that's separate. But what I will say is the entire plan, which is funded through both the county, state, and federal funds, will not require any debt servicing.
Okay.
It's not part of that number at all.
Okay, thank you. And initially, I wanted to note, does the budget include health benefits for members of this board?
I believe that the--
Yes. All seven, or?
They have the option of either taking health benefits or not.
Okay. Well, I'll follow up on this. I would be sincerely appreciative if you stopped, you know, stealing a hundred dollars from every inmate in the county jail. I think there's better ways to fund our county government, especially, you know, in light of everything going on, that would, that would be wise. That's all, thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote, motion carries. Is there a motion ordered to adopt the twenty twenty-four county budget?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, yes. County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Cockle, yes. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Yes. We have recognitions?
Um, we are joined by Frank Sernicki of the Pennsylvania News Watch and the whole dedication of the county.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, yes. County Commissioner Kenny, yes. County Commissioner Cockle, yes. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Yes. Is Frank Sernicki here?
No.
We have correspondence?
Each way, you're provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office in the public meeting. This correspondence will come out of the office of the clerk for the correction.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote, motion carries. Minutes for approval?
Minutes of Thursday, April fourth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting in June thirty-two.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, yes. County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Cockle, yes. County Commissioner McCollum, present. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Yes. Ordinances?
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Hope New Tribune, ninety-four eleven, twenty twenty-four. This public hearing was authorized in meetings of the Board of County Commissioners held on April fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, clerk will read orders, number four seven four.
Bond ordinance, number four seventy-four. Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital capital improvements add and end for certain facilities of Middlesex College located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating three million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Therefore, authorizing issuance of three million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollar bond or notes of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, for financing such appropriation in principle of the interest on the aggregate principal amount, which will be, which will be entitled to state aid pursuant to chapter twelve of the laws of New Jersey of nineteen seventy-one, and authorizing a publication to be held on Thursday, April eighteen, twenty twenty-four, six thirty P M, publication there.
Is there a motion to open, uh, the public hearing?
Seven.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Can you state your name and address? You have five minutes. Bond ordinance, number four seventy-four.
Thank you, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I wanted to ask of the three point three million, how much is for the CIO plan funding?
Nick, there's nothing for the CIO.
Nothing, this is just, you know, upkeep of the structures at the college that already exist, thank you.
Motion to vote?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote, motion carries. A motion to adopt ordinance, number four seventy-four.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, yes. County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Cockle, yes. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Yes.
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Hope New Tribune on April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. This public hearing was authorized in meetings of the Board of County Commissioners held on April fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Clerk of New York, number four seventy-five.
Bond ordinance, number four seventy-five. Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of various capital improvements add and for certain facilities of Middlesex College located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Therefore, authorizing issuance of two million, two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond or notes of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, for financing such appropriation, authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, April eighteen, twenty twenty-four, six thirty P M, publication there.
At this time, I open up the public hearing on ordinance, number four seventy-five.
Yeah, Charlie Cradville, once again, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Again, this also is not got to do with the CIO plan?
So when you look at the two ordinances, the first one's on chapter twelve, nine square, basically, it's a combination of both state and county funding, and so we match what the state puts out for facilities, infrastructure improvements. The second ordinance is really related to other capital investments with technology specific with no matching funds from the state.
Got it, but no CIO plan, it's just two different types of, okay, that's all, thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Vote, motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance, four seventy-five?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, yes. County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Cockle, yes. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Yes.
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Hope New Tribune on April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. This public hearing was authorized in meetings of the Board of County Commissioners held on April fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Clerk of New York, number four seventy-six?
Bond ordinance, number four seventy-six. Bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the Middlesex County Magnet Schools in and by the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating six million, five hundred thousand dollars. Therefore, authorizing issuance of six million, one hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and seventy dollar bond or notes of the county to finance part of the cost thereof, and further authorizing a public hearing to be held beginning of twenty twenty-four, six thirty P M, authorizing a publication thereof.
At this time, I open up the public hearing, ordinance, number four seventy-six. Motion to vote, public?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote, motion carries. Motion to adopt ordinance, four seventy-six? Aye.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, yes. County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Cockle, yes. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Yes.
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Hope New Tribune on April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. This public hearing was authorized in meetings of the Board of County Commissioners held on April fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Clerk of New York, number four seventy-seven?
Ordinance, number four seventy-seven. Bond ordinance providing for the design and construction of the new Magnet School on the premises of Middlesex College in and by the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating forty-seven million dollars. Therefore, authorizing issuance of forty-four million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred dollar bond or notes of the county to finance part of the cost thereof, and further authorizing a public hearing to be held beginning of twenty twenty-four, six thirty P M, authorizing publication thereof.
Open up the meeting to the public, ordinance, number four seventy-seven. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yeah, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick. So this is appropriating forty-seven million dollars to create a new school, which is a good thing to do. I want to understand the process that went into picking this site for the school. So I understand these decisions have already been made, but what led you to decide that the best place to do the Magnet School was in Edison on the premises of Middlesex College?
Sure. So two things, one is, this was a project that was approved prior to the CIO initiative, which seventy-five percent funded through the state, twenty-five percent of the county. The decision to put the facility, the education facility on the college campus was very similar to what we decided upon when we moved the science technology school that's currently on the college campus there. This Magnet School offers programs related to logistics and business opportunities for students. As part of the CIO project, we're also putting the workforce development operation there as well. And so when you look at both the Magnet School and the college, and the type of students that come out of it, allowing them to work closely with also workforce development, provides a center of excellence for both taking individuals from education through the workforce to jobs.
Okay, I appreciate that. You touched on it, there's already an academy school there, right? At the same campus, so that will remain in operation? You'll have two Magnet Schools in the same general location?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I would respectfully submit that the Magnet Schools, which many folks might, refer to or remember as VOTEC schools, are a really good thing, and they help a lot of people, and I think it would be better if they were spread out more, and, you know, selfishly, I care about New Brunswick, and I know that we were home to the first VOTEC in the United States of America, and it's a building that's sitting abandoned on Easton Avenue right now, closed years ago for reasons that I've never been able to figure out. And I just think that as the county does choose to expand and build out the Magnet Schools into more places, gosh, it would make more sense to have one in New Brunswick than to have two on the Middlesex College campus. That's just one man's opinion, but I think, you know, as you move forward, you should consider New Brunswick. And certainly, you know, the question remains of what to do with that building there. I know it's no longer a public building, but, you know, I think there's a real opening in New Brunswick to have this kind of education, and it would help a lot of people. And one thing that I'm sure you're all aware, a lot of folks in New Brunswick don't drive, and options for things like getting your kid to a really good school are somewhat limited because of that. So I think that, you know, it makes sense to have a VOTEC or Magnet School in New Brunswick more than it does to spend forty-seven million on anyone in an area where there's already one. But can you just tell me, you mentioned it does fit into the CIO plan or could kind of co-opt into the CIO plan, is that fair to say, or it's just totally separate project? Is this?
No, since it's on the college campus, we simply look at the set of comprehensive program, so since it's the same site, we just incorporate it, you know, the funding was separate. But when you look at all that's gone on for the various projects of the multicultural center, stadium, the student center, workforce development, Magnet School, that all comprises the CIO project.
Okay, I think that's my, my cry is for more public input, more engagement, because I know that there's a lot of people in the county that would have opinions about this if they were asked before the decisions were made, but, you know, here we are now, and I know these, again, decisions have already been made. But in the future, as, as the county grows, make sure to gather input from the public, especially when you're making such a big decision like this, that's all.
Is there a motion to close the public portion, vote?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote, motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance, four seventy-seven?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asko de Barbe, yes. County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Cockle, yes. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rhea.
Yes. Mr. Kelsey, any others to be added?
There are none.
Any to be amended?
There are none.
To be held?
There are none.
Any others to be voted?
Yes, Resolution twenty-four dash five three nine, as we indicated, this resolution is no longer needed, it is a placeholder on the agenda.
At this time, I open up the meeting to the public. To speak on any resolutions listed on the agenda, I'll state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
All right, good evening once again, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. We'll start on page seven. I wanted to ask about the affordable housing, affordable rental housing for homeless individuals and families, Resolution five twenty. Can somebody give me the update on this project, when the money come online and refresh my memories? This has already come up before, I kind of feel like this six hundred thousand was already on your agenda once before.
Yeah, in late twenty twenty-three, we did a commitment of the fund so that they could put their whole funding package together, so this is actually the execution of the agreement, so the money can be dispersed. It's scheduled to be demolished, I think, the end of May, and then the project should be complete with new construction by the end of the year.
Terrific. Moving to page eight, I see four items in a row, beginning with five thirty-three, that are each acceptance of grants for eight and a half million dollars. Can you tell me about these? Are these part of the CIO plan, and why is it four separate grants of exactly the same eight and a half million?
Charlie, the reason you sit there about their choices, one is the, except the application and one is the minimum actual budget, so that's why it's two.
Got it, and these are the two that came up at the last meeting?
Correct, that was for the application process.
Right, okay, thank you. Moving on to five forty-four on page nine, can I ask how many square feet the county is renting at this space? Is it a couple of floors, they have two different floors or just one?
Which number, I'm sorry?
Five forty-four, ninety-six dash one hundred, fired associates, first property management. Does anybody know the quantity of real estate being rented for ten grand a month?
This is, I believe this is real estate space of the purpose of the prosecutor's office and municipal offices that we're extending it for another two years, and on the square foot we provide it to you.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Moving on, and I think the only other one I want to ask about is under MCAP five five eight, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of vehicle graphics. Can you tell me, is that the ride on demand, or are these the other, you know, transportation vehicles? What is this?
As you were, Charlie, we started a planning program called Ride, Ride Share, and under that umbrella, we are going to be migrating all of our services, including MCAP, under the Ride brand. So what we want to do, start to transform, whether it be fixed route preservation based, microtransit, and we are looking at expansion of a lot of the other options. We want to put that now all under the Ride brand name of the county, and then it provides a little bit of exposure for the public to see the transportation mechanism we're putting in place, so we're basically transforming our product fleet with the brand.
Okay, I think the comment I made on the last ordinance would apply that, you know, public input is key, and unfortunately, there has not been a lot of that with the Transportation Coordinating Committee, you know, lapsing and not, not meeting, and, you know, I see some reasons why you might want to go in the direction you're going, but I also have some concerns. For instance, does this mean the drivers will no longer have a good county job? You know, does it mean that we're basically privatizing the role of drivers? And, you know, I know this is, you have a pilot program, but it sounds like it's a pilot program that you're going, that you're planning to build on very quickly and, you know, not just leave in place but actually expand. And I'll just say that it's been going on for just about six weeks so far, so it's still a lot, a lot to learn, and I think there's also a missing piece of input, feedback from the community, so I'll continue to make my opinions known, but I encourage the county to do more outreach, and I know there's some things that are forthcoming, but, you know, before you make the decisions, it's key to gather the input. And so, yeah, would you, would you be willing to just tell me, is that, should, should we be worried about the drivers, you know, losing their jobs and this work being privatized? Or is there a different plan?
On the contrary, we see this as an expansion of the role the county plays with state transportation services. It is simply a pilot to see and prove its, the importance and value it brings, and if it does, then how we operate it long-term, we do not believe that it will affect any county or the workforce. If anything, it will create future problems.
Well, that, that's good to hear, and I'll keep in touch and follow up. That's all on the resolutions.
All in favor? Aye. Vote, motion carries. Don't have to vote on anything except the week.
I am. I am number twenty-four five eight one dash R.
And I've got twenty-four dash five oh nine R, because of New Jersey Transit, and twenty-four dash five-- And I've got 24-509-R, which is a major transit, and 24-522-R, which is a--
522?
522.
Mr. Kelsey? Oh, sorry.
I have three. 24-513, 24-532, 24-555.
Okay, Mr. Kelsey?
Yes, Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt an agenda consisting of resolutions numbers 24-507 to Resolution 24-581, excluding Resolution 24-537, which was previously voted upon, 24-539 to be voided, and Resolutions 24-581, 24-509, 24-522, 24-513, 24-532, and 24-555 to be voted upon.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda or--
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashland Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara? County Commissioner Director Rhea?
Yes. Now will be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner McCollum, that's 24-581.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashland Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Hopple? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
No.
No, sorry. Presenting the statement. Sorry.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rhea?
Yes. Now will be appropriate to consider the resolution that was excluded by Commissioner-- that we direct to Narra, that's 24-509 and 24-522. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashland Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Presenting the verdict.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rhea?
Yes. Now finally, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolutions included by Commissioner Tamara. They are 24-513, 24-532, 24-555. So a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashland Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Presenting the verdict.
County Commissioner Director Rhea?
Yes. This time I open up the meeting to the public. Can you state your name and address, and you have five minutes?
Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. It's a good thing I was here tonight. I wouldn't want you to be out of here by now. But I wanted to start by asking about Vision Zero. Was the vision to get to zero traffic fatalities and serious injuries on roadways in the county? Or was it to get to zero traffic fatalities and serious injuries on county-owned roadways?
This is the most important part of our function with Vision Zero is very simple. It's trying to make every effort to reduce any kind of vehicular crashes or injuries or fatalities. You know, it's, we make every effort. I mean, we've had maybe a lot of crashes in 2023, but don't forget to keep in mind that there's a lot of highways between Route 1, Turnpike, the Gardner State Parkway, Route 9, and, I mean, there's a lot of mileage that goes through Middlesex County. Now, based on the state average, Middlesex County is below the state average in 2023. And we're always looking to improve.
How's it going for 2024?
And 2024, we want to do the same thing. We want to increase awareness and safety.
Education.
I'm sorry.
Education.
Education, yes. Okay.
Well, I do have a document I wanted to hand, the commissioners. Keep one for myself. This is really unfortunate. The, we continue to lead in crash deaths for 2024 here in Middlesex County. We've lost 22 lives on roadways within the county. And, you know, I really was upset that you took such a narrow view of it in previous meetings, where you sort of said, oh, well, most of these are on state roads, state highways. So, you know, you said that I was disgraceful and my comments were deceiving by bringing this up when really, the majority of crashes are on roads that are not owned by the county. But I'll note that Vision Zero was a vision for zero traffic fatalities and serious injuries on roadways in the county, including local, state, county, you name it. The point is to save lives, not to pass the buck or blame others. And--
I've not tried--
I'm looking at five deaths in the past week, and if I didn't bring it up, it would have been brought up at this meeting tonight. So I'm concerned, you know, you point to other roads that are beyond your jurisdiction. Well, on April 2nd, you had a tour and a press event with Governor Murphy and Speaker Coughlin right here with a touch in, in Middlesex County. Did you bring this issue up to them? Did you say, we've lost a lot of lives on Route 1 and 130? You know, what are we doing about that? Did you, have you talked with these, you know, legislative leaders that you're close with, with the governor, about this?
We've had many conversations with the Board of County Commissioners right here, trying to improve safety in Middlesex County. Your comments are just so deceiving and wrong the way you're trying to make blame on this board for ignoring safety. That is not the case. Commissioner Kenny?
I wasn't, I wasn't-- May I, you know, reclaim my time? You'd be happy. You could certainly respond afterwards. I'm also concerned about your attendance, sir, at the Middlesex County Planning Board. You were not at the most recent meeting. In fact, you've only been at two meetings in the past year. Looking at this term, you've served for '22, '23, and '24. You only attended four meetings, and you missed 16 of them. So I don't understand why you are this board's representative on that board if you're not going to show up. Why have you been absent from so many meetings? Why don't you attend the planning board? And don't you think it'd be valuable for you to take your seat on that board that you are holding?
First of all, I've had conflicts because I've had other important meetings to attend to. And secondly, that's why we have alternates on the board to cover for any commission, any person on the planning board. That's why we have alternates to cover, to make sure that we have a quarm and conduct business. Do I want to make every meeting? Absolutely.
Okay. Well, you're missing, like, you know, the majority, the vast majority of them. So why not have somebody else on this board who can make it take your spot?
Because I have every right to be there and--
But you're not using that right. You're not, you're not showing up for the residents. You're not showing up. Why not?
Thank you. Your time is up. Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries.